The Franklin City Public Schools School Board to order and welcome everyone for coming out and joining us tonight. We've got a pretty packed house, so thank you for being here. I'd also like to say welcome. I see we've got a city council member here tonight, so welcome. Thank you for joining us. Do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
I move that the school board having been in closed session pursuant to a proper motion come out of closed session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Moving down the dais, all in favor signify by saying aye. Ladies have the same opportunity.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And aye. We are out of closed. Do we have a certification in regards to our closed session?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative reported vote and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.2-371.D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered.
We have a motion for certification. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ladies have the same opportunity.
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Aye. Motion from closed session. I believe we have one motion from closed session. Do we have any motions from closed session?
I move that we approve the personnel agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ladies have the same opportunity.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And aye. Next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all stand and join us?
We have a student.
I believe we have a student coming up to us.
Our student's from S.P.
Alright, so tonight we brought a team with us, so you can come on over here behind me. Good evening, Dr. Phillips. I meant Ms. Phillips. Dr. Hall Leonard, school board, Dr. Sterling, and the team.
Good evening again. We will present our fourth and fifth grade students that will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
My name is Shawn combo.
My name is Shawn combo.
Alright.
My name is, my name is Armani combo.
My name is, my name is Levaris Majet.
My name is Emily Jane.
My name is Detaire Riggs.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
I also want to thank all the parents that brought our team out tonight. If the parents can stand up.
Yes.
Parents and guardians.
Thank you.
Came out tonight.
Thank you very much for sharing your children with us tonight. We appreciate them leading us in the pledge. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ladies have the same opportunity.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And aye. Next up, we have roll call. Ms. Moore?
Andrea Shelton.
Michelle Williams.
Present.
Dr. Edgar Hall Leonard.
Present.
Amy Phillips.
Present.
Jessica Bank.
Present.
Next up is citizens time. Ms. Moore, do we have anyone signed up for citizens time?
No.
Alright, we do not. Next up is consent agenda. We have minutes before us for approval from our August the 15th meeting. Do we have a motion in regards to the meeting minutes for Thursday, August 15th, 2019?
I move to approve the minutes for the school board work session for August 15th, 2019.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Ladies have the same opportunity.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain. And aye. That motion carries. Next up, we have the report of the superintendent. Dr. Sterling, would you proceed?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We're, this is the report of the superintendent. First, we would like to start with a special presentation and good news. The first presentation should be Mr. Adisi. I can't hear you. Oh, we have a special presentation, thank you, from WHRO. That's right, we moved that around. Good to see you.
Members of the board, Dr. Sterling, thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Bert Schmidt. I am the president and CEO of WHRO and with me is my vice president of education, Elmer Seward, who's new as of past year, so you may have seen Brian Callahan over many years. As you'll recall, you're at one of the 21 school divisions that literally own the license to WHRO and every other year I come out and give you a summary of your investment in the station. And each year, we provide you an impact statement, which you have, I think, both electronic and a hard copy in front of you. So I'm going to refer to the, the impact statement with my report. And I start with the first page, which shows the leadership. Here, of course, Dr. Sterling, you've been very active with the superintendent group. We're getting together in just a couple of weeks. Really talk about regional strategic educational directions at those meetings. It's an important conversation amongst all these superintendents and Dr. Sterling's right there in the mix with everybody else advocating for what's best for the division. Dr. Hall Leonard is your school board representative. Thank you very much for that. You can see the other leadership that comes out of the division as well. Getting into the services on the next page, page two. First off, eMedia VA. This is a digital repository. We make digital learning objects available to your schools, to your teachers, to your students, free. We have about 160,000 SOL correlated videos, audios, lesson plans, quizzes, really anything you can digitize. It's all correlated to Virginia Standards of Learning. It's searchable by keyword, by grade level, all sorts of ways, and it's free to every teacher in the division. We do a lot of training around eMedia VA. If your folks still need to understand how to use this service, something that the superintendents asked us to create about seven or eight years ago, our folks are happy to come out. I have dedicated staff to help train your, your teachers on how to use eMedia VA. We have a contract with the Department of Education to provide that to every school in the Commonwealth. We have over 125,000 educators with eMedia VA accounts and that, that contract continues to grow with the Department of Education. We also do a lot of professional development for the divisions. You can see items two and three and on the next page, items four. We have special topic forums. We do online training, both professional, recertification and professional development, graduate credit courses through JMU. Those are all available through our Teacher Alliance service. We also offer professional development in coding. Coding, we know is a big deal now and helping teachers understand how to teach coding. We've had lots of camps around that and that's become one of our more popular professional development opportunities. On page three, item five is our workforce development service called Skills Online. We have thousands of courses in 12 different industry sectors. We also have a GED online program. We have soft skill modules, all of these available to, to your teachers, to your students, anybody in the, in the career ed space who's looking to advance their, their career. In page four, our student services, probably the most important area and most talked about are the courses we make for you. We have created and given to you 26 high school online courses. You can see the list there. Algebra, trig, astronomy, biology, chemistry, digital citizenship, earth science, economics and personal finance, English 9, 10, 11, and 12, French, geometry, health and PE 9 and 10, math analysis, oceanography, online teaching methodology, physics, psychology, Virginia US history, Virginia US government, world geography, and both of the world history and geography courses. We've also developed a middle school career investigations course that's basically for, I think, 9 through middle school areas. And then we've modified 12, 16 courses. You can see that list at the end of the page. Think of us as the manufacturer. We have made the courses. We have given them to you to put in your learning management system to meet the needs of your strategic planning around online learning. All of these courses assume a teacher will be involved, so we're not excluding the teacher. They're intimately involved in the course. A student can be completely at home. It can be a blended model, a flipped model. You can tear the courses apart and modify them to meet the way you want to teach a course, but we've made them and because you're one of the owners, we give them, all of them to you. Now, I will tell you, the schools that don't own this, we sell these at about $10,000 per course. So you get them all for free as part of the ownership and we continue to have conversations about what the next courses are. In fact, we've been asked by the governor's office to create an African-American history course. You may have heard that announcement a few weeks ago, so we will be making that this year. The charge is to be ready for next school year. Big, it's a big task. Well, we think we can get there, but that'll be, we'll be reporting on that next year. We also find now, the courses I just talked about are highly interactive. You're going to be using a computer and you're going to be interfacing with, manipulating items on a screen and actively involved in the learning process. But teachers have also told us they would simply like to have every single lesson that a student might experience in the classroom. So we have for algebra, geometry, and earth science, create every single lesson that you would have if you went through that class, using a master teacher, whiteboard, labs, etc. And so if a student misses a class because they're suspended, they're sick, there's a snow or hurricane day, your teacher can simply send a link to those students and there's no reason they need to be, need to fall behind. We find especially for kids for some reason are suspended for a week and concerns there, they're already having issues and they're falling behind, they can send a leak for, link for each class and they can be caught up with, with all those lessons. So they're all available free, freely through eMedia VA and again, we're happy if there's confusion to help with anybody that needs help to work this out. Also on page five, Virtual Virginia. You have a lot of students that take Virtual Virginia course. We operate Virtual Virginia. We have from day one. You had over 300 students last year that took a course through Virtual Virginia, especially for a division this size. It's a pretty, pretty high number, maybe the highest of all, all the divisions in our region. Very impressive. Page six, we love to celebrate smart kids and we would love to get the division more involved in these activities because again, it doesn't cost you any more. We have our PBS Kids Writers Contest. These are for elementary school kids. They write and draw stories. They submit them to our judges. And then we have a panel judges that, judges these and we have winners. We actually create a TV show and we actually work now with Regent University where they take some of these stories and they take the characters that they've drawn and they turn them into living, moving cartoon programs. Working with the, the very talented folks at Regent, it's amazing when you bring a child in front of a class of college students and they explain the backstory amongst their characters. So how, why would the, why would the trash can do this thing next? So it's a lot of fun there. The Virginia Pilot Spelling Bee, we've been doing this now for, coming up on our 13th year. The winner from the regional spelling bee goes on to nationals. This is, your middle school buildings will compete locally, send those building winners to our regional bee and then they move on to, and then of course, we broadcast that, that bee throughout the entire area. We've been doing that now, it'll become up on our 13th year. And then the Great Computer Challenge, our 34th year of this, this, these are teams K through 12 that compete in various software programs and applications. You can see some sampling there in the document, but they, they spend a weekend over at ODU, they compete, they have a great time, and they show off their skills in various computer programs and, and applications. We'd love to have students from the division as a part of those, those activities. Quickly over to page seven, some of the videos we've, we've been producing lately. We recently produced a video 360 project called Decisions, primarily meant for middle schoolers to, you put on your headset or you use just an iPhone with the cardboard thing and you can experience being at a party, you're offered a beer, you're offered an opioid and, and what, based on what decisions you make, there's a storyline and it can be good or bad, but it helps in the conversation around substance abuse at the middle school level. Those are again, free to all of you. We've also done, you remember Schoolhouse Rock for some of us at a certain age?
Yes.
We've done that.
Yes.
I'm not trying to, yeah, but we've done this now in two areas. We've done it for health, our Health Beat series. We worked with our animators, with local musicians to do a dozen Schoolhouse Rock type videos, could be great for your morning announcements. And now we've done about a half dozen. We'll finish up this year, the balance of, of 12 Green Beat videos, which are focused on the environment, environmental issues. Our most popular one being Scoop the Poop, but I won't get into that right now. We also, on my TV stations, we have what we call our Education Now Spots. Dr. Sterling is a star on my air. It's airs quite a bit because you, you did a great job and, and you, the highlight was bringing students to the table to help be a part of the process and hearing directly from students. So some of your students are regularly on my air, so a little bit of a star factor going on over here. I won't get into a lot of the detail in, in 10, but we do a lot in the space of environmental science and then environmental education. You can see all the deliverables we have there. And then I'm going to jump to page nine, Ready to Learn. We do a lot in the early childhood space. You can see we have two different vans, a STEM van and a literacy van. We've got reading camps, we've got coding camps, we have reading buddy programs on library corners, we've got websites for children, and we have, even have a first books program. Again, none of this costs you any more money to participate in. The more you participate, the more you get from your investment. As board members, you care about your investment as well. Page 12 identifies that, that return on investment. You spend $2 per student per year, so you can see the investment you made last year was about $3,500 and last year in savings and value, well, it was over $1.6 million. It's pretty good ROI, I think. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
No questions, but as for me, just like to say thank you for the services that you do provide for our students in Franklin City.
Great. Okay. I'll see you in a few weeks.
Thank you again.
Thank you for coming out and joining us tonight and presenting to us.
For, so another productive year. Alright, next, we're going to move forward. We'll have Ms. Adisi. She will be announcing our GED recipients.
Members of the school board, Madam Chairperson, Dr. Sterling, good evening.
Good evening.
I am accompanied by Mr. Smith, Mrs. Teague, who were very instrumental in us getting to this point. I am here to present certificate of completion to two of our summer graduates from Franklin City Public Schools Adult and Continuing Education Program. As I call your name, would you please come forward? Thank you so much.
Oh, if you all can please stay at the front. We have awards from the school board as well in Franklin City. It states Franklin City Public Schools Award of Achievement, presented to Mr. Chance Fuller and Ms. Samantha Sawyer. Franklin City Public Schools is honored to present this award in recognition of your hard work and dedication on Thursday, September 19th, 2019. Congratulations. This was presented by our school board chair.
If we could bring him on this side, so take a picture with him. And my high school president.
That's right.
Who graciously announced a little bit to the stage.
Chance, where you at? There we go, there we go.
Alright. Good chance, good chance.
Chance and Samantha, I want to say congratulations to both of you. Graduations, a lot of times, when you go through it and you graduate on time, it's about what you have to do. You coming back and doing this and achieving this goal on your own shows it's what you wanted to do. So I commend you on that accomplishment and say congratulations to both of you.
Yeah.
And if I could just take a second, I'm an adult educator and I just wanted to say kudos to you, Ms. Adisi, and your team. And Chance and Samantha, I, I don't know how many of the high school seniors out there could actually nail that test like you all did. I work with guys every day who are trying to get four out of four sections. Some of them are, you know, sitting at three, trying to get that fourth one. So I personally know what you guys went through to be holding that certificate that you're holding right now, so please hold your heads high and I wish you the very best of luck in the future. So good job.
And I'd like to share as well, I want you to know that Chance and Samantha, you are the first, okay? Now, I've been on the board since 2014, but I don't recall in the history of Franklin City Public Schools where we actually recognize our certificates being awarded at a school board meeting. So you are the first, feel like a star tonight. Outstanding. Congratulations. And I also want to say congratulations once again, like Ms. Johnson said, to Mrs. Adisi and her amazing team for helping you guys and to their family. I believe you all have family members present in the audience tonight. Congratulations to you.
Excellent. Next, we're going to move on to the Youth Alcohol and Drug Abuse Prevention Project presentation. This will be led by the students from Franklin High School and Ms. Harris Mohammed, who worked with them this summer.
Good evening, board members and Madam Superintendent. Again, I am Ms. Harris Mohammed, the Assistant Principal and Instructional Specialist at Franklin High School, and I also had the honor and pleasure of serving as the adult sponsor for these wonderful students at the YADAP Conference on the campus of Longwood University. With me this evening, I have our senior, Tashara Barrett, who is also our senior class sponsor. I also have Jason Foxworth, who is a sophomore at Franklin High School. I also have Kayvon Hawkes, who is also a sophomore, and then also Ayana Hudson, who is a junior. So we're going to begin this evening, ladies and gentlemen, and all that are assembled, to tell you what YADAP is about briefly and then the students are going to come one by one because this is their program. I'm just their sponsor and the person who continues to motivate them and beat them when they don't do what they're supposed to do. No, I don't, I don't beat them. The Youth Alcohol and Drug Abuse Prevention Project, which is also called YADAP, is a peer-led program for high school students to address the following: underage substance use at the high school level, also in their community. YADAP consists of a team of four student participants and a dedicated adult sponsor who attended a week-long summer conference to develop the skills necessary to create positive relationships in their communities and their schools and the lives of others whom they serve. Throughout the conference, participants met and interacted with like-minded peers during classroom and breakout sessions. They also were introduced to motivational speakers and I also monitored their free time. Next, you, we will have Tashara Barrett to talk with you about the review of the YADAP
Good evening, school board members and Madam Chairman, Person, and the Superintendent. My name is Tashara Barrett and I would like to thank you for sending me to the YADAP Conference and now I will be telling you a little bit about it. So we had to plan a stand plan, which is a plan that we come up with to help us come up with ideas to figure out what we could do within our community to prevent drug and alcohol usage within teens in our community. We came up with a lot of things and we also had the chance to go to breakout sessions with, which helped us learn how to plan, how to budget, and how to make sure that everyone was included and to think our plans through. We got to meet a lot of new people like ourselves and we also learned about leadership and taking the position to stand and lead everyone around us. At first, it was a little bit scary because I was away from home. I was really missing my mom. And Ms. Mohammed and the rest of my team helped me get a little bit more comfortable and I ended up getting a lot of recommendations that I applied to be a leader for next year, next summer, which is I will take part in controlling and/or supervising the other class members to help them come up with their stand plans, which was very good because no one knew me and I didn't know anybody, so I felt really special that I stood out from everyone else that was there because it was like a thousand. because it was like a thousand people there, a lot of cool. And that was a little bit about the conference. And now Ayana will be coming forth to share memorable moments from YADAP with you all.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to go to this conference and learn new things. One of my most memorable moments from this conference was the motivational speaker, his name is Darryl Bellamy. He talked about fears, particularly the fears of students, that every student has about the same fear, which is the fear of failure. And he taught us that we are all fearless inside, which is why I wear this bracelet that says, "I am fearless inside" every day.
There are a lot of moments that I could remember at YADAP, but one moment I will always remember is when we were in our letter groups and we had a little bit of free time and sometimes we would play Just Dance. And that really stood out to me because it was actually fun and I got to bond with a lot of peers that were in my letter group.
Wonderful.
So, I will also be sharing, and one of my most memorable moments was the same one as Ayana. He really spoke to me because I feel like in our community, in our school, there's a lot of people that fear a lot of things. And we have to learn how to be there for others. And we have to learn that everyone's situation is not the same, but there's always something that we can do to help.
The young people also wanted me to share a memorable moment. The memorable moment that I had was when the director of YADAP approached me and asked me about our children that were at the conference. And immediately I was like, "What do you mean?" And he said, "You have a young lady who has stood out these past couple of days." And he described her, and it was Tashara. And I said, "She's a rising senior and she's a well-rounded student." And I began to talk a little bit about her. And this is a gentleman who was appointed by the governor, current, our current governor. And he stated to me that if her application was sent to him, to his office, to be a youth leader next summer, he was going to make sure that she was hired. And I said, "If you do that, I will make sure I drive her" to wherever the campus is. So that's, we had a lot of memorable moments, but that was one that will always remain with me because she's a Franklin City Public Schools student. And he came to me and said that about her. So, I was, you know, I'm a bragging a little bit, but now we have, Jason Foxworth is also a part of our team. He was unable to attend the conference, but he is still a part of our team. And so, the other three came back and showed him all the things that they learned. And so now, he has a little something for you.
Will y'all please stand up and join us on our little skit?
You're going to come out to the front? You all can come out this way? You can be anywhere.
That was wonderful.
Well, well, well.
That's a great segue because apparently I need help with my business.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, once again. This was so important to see that you are bringing back the knowledge that you've learned. But most importantly, you did something this evening that this board really was channeling. And we were talking about really being open and leaning on one another and it was so befitting out of the mouths of children.
That's right.
Out of the mouths of children, channeling that energy. So I just want to thank you for things that you don't even know that you've done this evening, but they've made an excellent positive impact. Shall we move forward? Are you ready?
Yes ma'am.
We're going to move forward to our Student Liaison Report. We have the Student Liaison for the month of September 2019, Mr. Myron Barrett Jr. Myron is currently a senior at Franklin High School. He is ranked in the top 3% of his graduating class. He is a part of his High School Student Government Association, where he holds the distinguished position as President. And is a part of the National Honor Society. Myron is the quarterback of the Franklin High School's football team. So we have student government, National Honor Society, quarterback, top 3%. Does it get any better? Just keep reading, Sterling, right? All right. Quarterback of Franklin High School's football team. And also, it gets better, participates in basketball and track. After graduation, Myron plans to attend a four-year university and major in mechanical engineering. I present to you today, Mr. Myron Barrett Jr., our Student Liaison for September 2019. Please.
Thank you. Good evening again, I'm Myron Barrett again, Jr. I want to like to thank Mr. Phelps and FHS family for nominating me to be the Student Liaison. Today, I will be giving you the events at all three schools, Franklin High, JP King, and SP Morton Elementary. So, events that have happened at Franklin High are on, FHS Class of 2020 took senior portraits in July and September. The Franklin Broncos Cheerleaders in Band participated in the opening convocation that was held on August 30th. All grade levels met with Mr. Phelps during the first five days of schools to discuss school rules and regulations. FHS staff and students participated in safety drills such as fire drills, lockdown drills, and bus evacuation drills. The Student Government Association held a meeting on September 9th to discuss homecoming, senior trips, fundraising, and ways to improve FHS. Dual enrollment at Camp Community College has started and will soon be in effect at Todd Water Community College as well. College visit has begun. Bridgewater College visited FHS on September 18th and the University of Virginia will be visiting on September 24th. Laptop distribution to students will begin on September 23rd. The FHS family would like to thank the school board for all donations that were donated towards the laptops. So if we can get them a hand, please. Juniors and seniors have already signed up for SATs and ACTs. All fee waivers have been distributed. The FHS Vanguard Early Academy, Early College Academy Student, Early College Academy Program First Cohort has started as well. The FHS Theater Team is taking on a new project this fall. They will be creating a haunted house at FHS, which will be held on October 26th and 27th. Fall sports are on full swing. The Franklin Broncos Football Team, Volleyball Team, Golf Team, and Cross Country Team, as well as cheerleaders, have been representing FHS in a positive way. Events at JP King Middle School. JP King Middle School Open House was held on August 29th. It was one of the largest open house turnouts that JP King has had in years. And on September 12th, JP King held its first Parents' Partners for the 2019 school, 1920 school year, with the pleasant turnout of a total of 154 parents, students, and staff attending. At Parents' Partners, staff, parents, and students discussed expectations for students and parents such as dress code policy, behavior, academics, and attendance. Parents also had the opportunity to sign up for parent portal. A total of 60 Chromebooks were distributed as well at Parents' Partners for a rental fee of $25. Staff used a PowerPoint to inform parents and students on Chromebook usage and responsibilities. Plus One was introduced to eighth-grade parents and students. Plus One is an opportunity for eighth graders to start earning high school credit in PE, 9, and Art One. Now about that, I would say we'd have had that one. But we ain't going to speak on that, it's cool. I'm looking forward to my sister to do that. But 25 students have transferred to JP King, which has increased enrollment from the previous years. Events at SP Morton. New teacher orientation was held on August 12th through 15th. August 19th, teachers returned back to SP Morton. Professional development was on August 19th through 22nd. Teacher assistants returned back to school on August 26th for Department of Social Services staff training. On August 26th through 29th, teacher workdays were held to prepare for the 2019-20 school year. Open House Labs registration was held on August 29th. The SP Morton faculty and staff attended a convocation on August 30th. September 3rd, SP Morton students returned back to school from summer break. Phonological awareness literacy screening began on September 16th. Student growth assessment pre-test started being administered on September 17th. Community Day was held in Pretlow Gardens Apartments on September 18th. On September 24th, SP Morton will be having Family Night. The Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program assessment will begin on September 29th. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much for your report. At this time, we do understand it is a school night and you have asked to be dismissed. You did an excellent presentation and we appreciate it.
I believe he has Mom in the audience?
Is Mom in the audience?
Yes.
Very, very proud. I want to go back to his report, just a quick mention for JP King, that we have 25 new students that have transferred into our division. And I think we have a couple at the elementary as well. Enrollment is up at all three schools. So I think it's important that we get those numbers because that is something that we need to be extremely proud of. And also, it was nice to hear the gentleman say that he wished he had Plus One when he was in high, was in eighth grade. But I think Mr. Parker should give us the numbers from last, for this year, for Plus One. You have approximately, that is something to be proud of as well. Oh, you could have said it from your seat, but anyway, no.
How much time does Mr. Parker have tonight, Dr. Sterling?
Two minutes.
Good evening to the school board, Madam Chair, Ms. Phillips, Vice Madam Chair, Dr. Hall Leonard, Sterling, our leader, and to everyone else in the audience. Plus One, we are right at 38 students in PE and probably about 10 to 12 students in art, so which puts us over 50, 50 students in the Plus One program. Numbers are steady growing. We're going to cut it off on tomorrow. Kids are very excited. Ms. Lawrence and Ms. Garrett, they are very excited and our kids are definitely moving forward, taking advantage of it. Thank you.
So that was the majority of your eighth graders are involved?
Yes, we have 70 students in our eighth grade class. So we use, say 50, it's probably about 20 students who, for whatever reason, they're not taking advantage of it. Some of them are in sports, but at the same time, like I said, numbers are steady growing. So every day, we may have three or four that will add on. So we'll see tomorrow, but we have to cut it off on tomorrow because of the number of hours, okay? Any questions for me? Thank you.
Excellent job.
I will just make one comment. I am very impressed with the students that you have that are attending that program. I've been up there a couple times in the parental role. But I have observed those students and, of course, your students are well behaved. We know what your students, the expectations are of your students. But they all want to be there. They all, it's not like Mom told me I had to do it. They genuinely want to be a part of that program, which speaks volumes for what these kids are looking forward to for their futures by doing this.
Ms. Lawrence and Ms. Garrett, they do a great job.
They do, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Team.
Team.
Alright, excellent. Thank you. We're going to move on to curriculum and instruction. And that will be Ms. Burkholt.
Good evening, School Board Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Sterling, staff, and community. I come before you tonight to officially present the contracts with our college partners that you've already approved. Our first one is with Camp Community College and it's our dual enrollment contract with Franklin High School students. Our second one with Camp Community College is the New Teacher Academy that begins its implementation this school year. Our third college contract is with Todd Water Community College and that's for our Vanguard Early College Academy. And now I'd like to present to you the 21st Century CCLC Award. Samuel P. Morton and Joseph P. King received their award letter again. They will, both schools will begin October 3rd. And now we have our Director of Special Education coming forward.
Before we, I'm sorry to interrupt you, before we move forward to the Director of Special Education, can you provide us a little bit more information about where we are with the New Teacher Academy? I know you were registering and you wanted to make certain that everybody was in.
Absolutely, Dr. Sterling.
We're just very proud of the program and partnership with Camp Community College.
So currently, we have everyone registered. Two are partially registered, but they should be registered today because we got the last of their information from Mr. Garrett to complete it for two of your staff members. We will have to possibly adjust payment by one week because we had to go to hand because with the teachers working and with them starting enrollment. But as of now, we may have to adjust that. It will depend. They're gonna let me know next week. Tomorrow, I present the course offering guide to them and then we'll be ready to rock and roll with our first teacher meeting the first Monday of this month, the last Monday of this month, actually. And that's where we are.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Alright, Dr. Patton. I'm sorry, I'm claiming it for you.
Claim it.
Good evening to everyone. Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Sterling. Again, good evening to everyone. I'm here this afternoon or this evening to present to you Exceptional Education's performance. I'm really excited about it, so please excuse me, but I'm really, really excited about it. It is the results-driven accountability. VDOE requires school divisions to submit data for their annual performance report. For several years, Franklin City Public Schools has been in the area of needs improvement because of performance from the data in the areas of reading and math. If we move on to the next slide, please, you could see what our previous scores were. Previously, in the area for results, the total number that you could get was 20. If you see results, we only earned 11 points. We did earn the full 20 for compliance. We are consistently in compliance with everything that we do with exceptional education, but the performance part is the area that we really needed to focus on. Those areas were the areas of reading and math. So our total points earned was only 31, which indicated that we need assistance, needed assistance because we only earned a score of 78%. We just received our report and if you look at the results, we have earned 24 points in the area of results and 20 points in the area of compliance with 100% score for every area in the area of reading, in the area of math, in the area of compliance, as well as graduation. So we have 100% total performance and Franklin City Public Schools Exceptional Education Department now is, and I'm so excited, next slide. We meet requirements. So we know we are no longer in need of assistance. I'm very excited. The goal is to keep it moving forward. So congratulations to everyone that has helped support us in this endeavor and we're just gonna keep moving on forward.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright. Next, we'll move forward with the Division Financial Report with Ms. Pamela Kendrick, our Director of Finance.
Good evening, Board Members, Dr. Sterling, community, and colleagues. In your packet, you have the financial update for the Finance Department. The Finance Department is currently in review of a new financial management system. At this time, we have reviewed two, one being Admins and then the other being Aloe View. So the next steps are for us to look at the products in more depth and have more of the department included in the meetings that we have with the associates from the agencies that we've already reviewed and to get some price analysis for those products. And then also, you have two purchase orders that were previously approved. The first purchase order was purchase order 20-258 for Hufflin, I mean, I'm sorry, Hooten, Mifflin, and Harcourt in the amount of $15,860.53. And the other purchase order is purchase order number 20-260 for Electronic Systems, Inc. And that was for $29,753.80.
Were those previously approved or did you need approval on those tonight?
They were actually previously approved at the work session. They're just being presented for, to the public for transparency again on tonight.
So there's no recommended?
I'm sorry. I move to strike that and to request approval of both of those purchase orders on tonight. Thank you.
Alright, so we'll take these one at a time. If you want to take a second to look at purchase order 20-258.
I move to approve the purchase order 20-258 to Hoffton, Mifflin, Harcourt for special education curriculum in the amount of $15,860.53.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 Aye and aye.
Thank you, Baron.
That motion carries. And next up is purchase order 20-260.
I would like to make a motion to receive purchase, approve purchase order number 20-260 for the Electronic Systems, Inc. in the amount of $29,753.80.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 Aye. And aye.
We thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Kendrick. Next, we'll have our Assistant Superintendent. That will be Ms. Okema Branch, Dr. Branch. She will give us the provisional licensure update.
Good evening, School Board Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Sterling, School Board, and community. I am pleased to update you on our licensure updates to date. We have pulled data from the past three cohorts, beginning with Cohort 2017 to 2018, whose license expire June 2020. We have one teacher in provisional licensure status who will be completed before that time. In Cohort 2018 and 19, which license expire in 2020, and this is June of 2020, there are six teachers. We are working diligently, as I will explain in just a moment, to get all of these teachers licensed prior to the end of 2020, June. And in Cohort 2019, 2020, which expires June 30th, 2022, there are two teachers for a total of nine provisionally licensed teachers from these three cohorts. Our new teachers, we are in receipt of paperwork and they have until September 30th to get their paperwork in for us to begin the initial licensure process. I will be able to update you in the coming months, once we receive that feedback from Virginia Department of Education. We are aggressive in obtaining licensure, full licensure for all of our teachers. We want 100%. Our goal this year is above 90% to have full licensure. I believe we will from these three cohorts. We have scheduled and planned individual licensure plans created for each provisionally licensed teacher. We are meeting one-on-one with each of our provisionally licensed teachers from each of the cohorts to review each, every one of their requirements, coursework, as well as testing. Included in that planning is our timelines to guide them and we will do follow-up for each milestone marker throughout this licensure process. This is a collaborative effort. While the teacher is responsible, we want to make sure that there are supports. I have informed our principals that they will also receive the plan to support their teacher and staff member along the way in receiving their licensure. Information will be provided not only to the teacher who received a signed copy in our office at the meeting, but to the administrators for professional development, follow-up, and support. And lastly, follow-up from HR with each teacher will take place, as I mentioned, along each milestone. We want to make sure that we're not just leaving them out there to take care of this when life happens and they become busy, but that we're there along the way to encourage them. So this process has started. We are in full swing and we will have all teachers having been met with within the next week and a half. Any questions?
Yes, I noticed the cohort of six teachers. You had said 2020, but I know on the slide it said 2021, but I just wanted to verify. Do they have until 2021 to get their license?
They do. They do. That was my misspeaking.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, they do. Thank you. Any other questions or?
I just want to say, it really makes me feel really good about the process that we are rallying around these teachers and creating a community around them to help them along that way because I know that tests from people that I know that have taken that to get their licensure is not the easiest thing in the world. So I, I know that they've got to be very grateful for that support, even if it's nothing more than a cheerleader at some point to push them through. But I'm very grateful that we are supporting them that, that much through this process.
Thank you. That has been the sentiment from each of the teachers, that we are sitting down and reviewing this information with them. We've had tears, we've had laughs, but we've had support and they know they can reach back to us. Dr. Sterling, is it appropriate for me to share about the superintendent's memo?
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
But it will be. It will be a part of that celebration process and, but this is definitely a part of the board's goals, a part of my goals, which means it's a part of our division's goals. It's something that we've communicated and we started this process last year and several of our teachers received full licensure. And I just want to thank Dr. Branch for stepping in, picking up that ball and continuing this process. And I did walk in on a couple of meetings where teachers were just saying thank you. They needed to be held accountable and thank you for the support. So I'm just pleased that she's continuing this work. And by the next work session, we should be able to make that announcement.
We look forward to the to-be-continued.
Yes, so you're gonna have to come back.
Thank you.
Dr. Branch, just want to welcome you to Franklin City Public Schools. We are just pleased to have you join our team.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead on and move forward to operations. Mr. Ryder could not be here with us this evening. That is our Assistant Superintendent over operations. He attended a regional nutrition meeting today. So I will be reading his reports for operations updates, completed projects for summer 2019. Roof maintenance, the roof was repaired at the maintenance shop, replaced walk-in freezer at SP Morton, painted, all classrooms were painted at SP Morton, doors and frames, repaired and painted walls at JP King, replaced tin PT AC, AC units at JP King and FHS, resurfaced gym floors at JP King and FHS, which are absolutely beautiful. They replaced the walk-in cooler and walk-in freezers at JP King, demolished and completely remodeled the special needs classroom, classroom at FHS and that will be a special ribbon cutting coming up soon. Do we have the date for that?
We are having our planning meeting on Wednesday, but we will be able to announce the date after Wednesday.
Excellent. So we'll definitely look forward to that. And there are some visuals for the board and community's review. And that concludes the summer projects. Next is the superintendent, part of the superintendent's report is the community engagement, FCPS Community Meet and Greet. I want to first thank our board members and our community members, our parents, our principals, our teachers for participating, but not only them, this was a collaborative effort with the city of Franklin, Camp Community College, as well as Franklin City Public Schools, and the Franklin City Police Department. You had all major areas going, knocking on doors, meeting and greeting families, and it was just a wonderful experience. The first meeting greet took place in Dorchester. That was Monday, September 16th. In one of the pictures, you have our new board member there with our city manager and Ms. Harris Muhammad. And the next one, you have Mr. Phelps, you have the our new police chief, teachers, and board members, all greeting one family. You have our city council woman, Ms. Copeland there. And, I'm sorry, Ms. Copeland, and Ms. Garrett, and you have the three principals. So these are just for your review. It was an outstanding kickoff to our meet and greet. Our next community group meet and greet was at Pretlow Gardens. It was Wednesday, September 18th. We, the children were very excited about popsicles with the police. They, they all ran up and got their popsicles and was able to shake their hands, ask them questions, and as you see, the principals and our board chair standing there with families doing meet and greet as well. So this effort, I must say, has made a tremendous impact on our community. We have one more event that has been Berkeley Apartments. Due to weather conditions this week, it has been rescheduled to Wednesday, September 25th, and we'd like to invite you out if you can attend. But again, this is just the first of many. We're going to select three more communities and we will be sending that information out for meet and greets as well. This is ongoing. This is not just a one-time thing that we're doing. We want to meet our families all throughout the year. So hopefully, you all can attend. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Sterling. Moving next to our agenda, we have business by board members. We have some important dates that are included. Very important within our community this weekend, the Saturday, September 21st from 2:00 to 6:00. We have the Franklin African American Art Festival, Franklin African American Festival. There will be artwork on display from all three of our schools. So if you have time, definitely come out, not just to enjoy the community, but to support our children as well. And there will be some displays from our students from the elementary school as well. Monday, September 23rd, Franklin City Council has their meeting and the school division will be introducing their new administration to the city.
We will be announcing all, everyone from the principals to everyone in
We will be announcing all, everyone from the principals to everyone in central office and we would love to have our school board attend as well.
As Dr. Sterling also just said, the next community meet and greet is the rescheduled Berkeley meet and greet, which will be Wednesday, September twenty-fifth. We have a board session coming up on October the third. We have also, this board has scheduled training on October the eleventh, that is a Friday. We'll be meeting at the Franklin Business Center and we'll be looking at our governor's handbook as well as the vision for the school division. Excuse me, vision for the board. And then, of course, our regular meeting for next month will be October seventeenth. Let me just jump back for just a second and the board work session on October thirty-two, October third, I just wanna draw attention to that because we will be meeting that day in, at SP Morton. So that's a little out of the norm for where we usually meet. That will be our visit to Morton and their opportunity to highlight what they do best. Any questions, anything that we've overlooked within those dates that anyone had to add, wanted to add?
I have a question in reference to the training that's listed here for October, let me find it. Friday, October the eleventh. We did have a discussion in reference to the governor's handbook and we all agreed, it's my recollection, that we did want to move in that direction and proceed. However, we did not confirm this date, the Friday, October the eleventh. Did you?
That was a date that was previously scripted.
For VSBA?
For VSBA.
Okay, I don't, I think some of us have a conflict, so is it possible to go back and look at that date?
If, if we do have some that have conflicts, because we all do need to be in attendance, we can go back and look at that date.
Yeah, I could do Friday, just not that time.
Not that time? Is there, because we, we need to allow about a four-hour block because we're looking at the governor's handbook and the vision, is there a better timing during the day that works for everyone? I'm, I'm free, I can make it work for me anytime during the day.
So if we don't relate the point tonight, can we just have our poll?
I will have Ms. Moore poll the board and we will move forward from there. Okay? All right, moving along, next on the agenda, business by school board members. Is there anything that any of my fellow board members would like to share? All right. Then it looks like we have one final item on the agenda, eight point one, which would be to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and we have a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. If you say nay, you're staying by yourself.
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you for it too.